Our city council study session for today's date. Again, Councilmember Glover is excused. First item on our agenda is to review the October 15th council meeting agenda. So council, please refer to that document. We do have a staff presentation on agenda, item 7A. And I think we'll just do that at the conclusion of reviewing the agenda. Okay? First several items are... Yes, I'm sorry. Mr. ... Yes, Mr. Luna.
I just had a question on Chupacabra.
Yeah. They're true. Yeah, they're real.
They're real. No, I just thought it was funny. So, anyway, I just had to bring that up.
Which item is that?
It's, uh...
3I.
3I?
3I.
Really?
See them in Texas? See them in Texas?
They have them in Texas.
See them run across the border.
Yeah. We'll see Chupacabras there, right?
This a mysterious animal?
Yes, mysterious animals.
Well, probably like the jackalope.
Exactly.
Okay. Any other questions regarding mythical animals related to liquor licenses? Okay. Item four, various purchase contracts. Five is various zoning resolutions. Six is public hearings on ordinances. Currently, we don't have... We do have items off of the consent agenda is a public hearing on the east and west of redevelopment area plans. But we'll be hearing more about that from Mr. Jebiniak. Yes, Mr. Freeman.
Mr. Brady, I have a question on 4J, city well number 10. In reading through it, I, for want of understanding, this is just the connection point from the well. The well itself is fine. And then you're just upgrading the connection points. I guess Beth and Jake are there. Thank you. So maybe just a... I mean, I read through the narrative. I thought it was interesting that this is like a million-dollar job contract and just for changing a 10-inch cast iron pipe to 12-inch and then all the infrastructure involved.
Mr. Freeman, I'd like to know more about this. Remind us, which agenda item are we talking about?
4J.
4J. Okay, thank you.
So it seemed a little pricey, but maybe you can explain it to why it's that way.
Good morning, Mayor Freeman. Yeah, it is kind of a pricey project, but if you actually look at the aerial photo for this project, you'll see why. It's because this line crosses under numerous railroad tracks, right at the point on the UPRR railroad where it shifts and turns to the south. So there's... Just getting under that, we have to follow all the railroad regulations to get under there. So we have to have special people out there during this. And then there's a cost of just boring that underneath the railroad tracks. There are a lot of conflicts in this area. It's an older part of the city, and we're going under their yard in that area as well. So it's a very complex little project.
So it's boring, is probably the price tag?
Yeah, we're having to get under the railroad tracks.
Okay, not trenching, open trenching or anything? Okay. Yeah, I just, as I read into that, I didn't know the full scope of everything that was being done there. I kind of like construction, that's why I ask.
Anytime. Anytime you want to go out with us, let me know.
Yeah, I would. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll be bragging about some of the awards you guys picked up a few days ago under the last agenda item, but congratulations. City Mesa did well at the Arizona Forward event about a week ago.
Actually, Saturday night, it was really good. So, yeah. It has been. Yeah, I just, you know, we have an amazing staff, and they do great jobs with these projects. So it was good to see them recognized.
That's right. Well, as long as you're here. So in particular, you won an award for the Stadium Connector Path, and we were a close second on Pioneer Park.
Yes.
Brag about how you did the other day, just a little bit.
So Saturday night was the Arizona Forward Awards for Environmental Sustainability. It's a very large award ceremony, a lot of communities there. And we were chosen to be in the finalists for two projects. One of them is the Rio Salado and the Stadium Connector projects, which it's a very interesting construction project because it's right along the river, a very difficult area to build a path. But it's also very unique because it connects us to Tempe and then points west. And so it makes a continuous path through there. It was like a missing four-mile segment of path in our pathway system. And it's been very popular with people. We were recognized with what they call the Crescortia Award. So we took the top award for the Stadium Connector Path. And the second project we were nominated for was Pioneer Park. And we came in kind of runner-up on that project as well, but it was recognized too. And we have very nice awards and plaques for those two projects. So we were really pleased. My staff was excited. I know transportation was excited, as well as our Parks Department staff.
Well, we will do our best to... Let's plan on acknowledging those awards during the first part of our meeting on Monday, if that's all right.
That'd be great, thank you.
Bring those awards out, and we'll make sure people can just kind of tell the story again, because those were two very well-deserved awards.
Thank you.
Proud of the good work you do. Thank you. Counsel, any other questions for these folks? Mr. Freeman?
Well, not for those folks, but in 5A, Mayor, I just want to appreciate the Salt River Pima Miracle-Bending Community. They're sending $955,000 to our city and dispersing that throughout different projects within the city. And so we appreciate their cooperation and working with us. This is important things, everything they're doing there. It's helping us fund a lot of local community projects. So appreciate their support.
Thank you. That's... I really appreciate you pointing that out. We do have a great partnership with the Salt River Pima Miracle-Bending Community, and they are very generous in sharing their gaming revenues with the city. As you note, nearly a million dollars coming to... And part of the restrictions on the 12% donations that they make is it's not to serve their community, it's to serve their neighboring communities. And so these are some much-needed social service and other law enforcement and other programs in our city that get a much-needed boost from the generosity of our neighbors. So that's... Thank you for pointing that out. Anything else, counsel, before we hear this presentation? Okay. Mr. Wesley, please come and tell us. We have been waiting for a few years now to get some resolution on this issue. So, agenda item 7A, tell us what we're doing.
Yes, Mayor, counsel. This has to do with the Mesa Royale property that's located over west of Country Club, north of Main Street. And I know the council is quite familiar with this property from the work that's gone on there over the last couple of years. But it is a property that was annexed into the city back in 1949. At that time, did have some form of RV park residential development program there, and that has been there then for these many years. And over the years, has resulted in some challenges and maybe not the best living situation. And so the city became aware of this a couple of years ago and started working with the property owners to see what we could do to clean the area up and provide some better housing. CLPC is in the process of redevelopment of that property. They're going through the rezoning process. You'll have that case on your agenda. It's on for introduction on Monday and then in a couple of weeks for actual hearing. So just wanted to give you a heads up and highlight this project a little bit, because it's a great transformation for this particular property and for this area of Mesa. So they're proposing a combination of two- and three-story condominium units and have private garages. And these will be for-sale market-rate housing, both sides of Pepper, west of Date. On the north side is where they'll have the two-story buildings, because this then abuts the single-residence properties to the north. And each of the buildings will have three units in them. They are oriented so that they are perpendicular to the street. But the unit that is actually down on Pepper is fairly close to the street, and they are placed in the front, so they really front on the street, help develop that street presence. The images that you see here, the proposed development, we're still working with them on. They're a nice-looking development. We're still going through the design and view process. The final product may look a little different than this, but it'll only look better than this if there are any modifications. On the south side of Pepper, they're proposing three-story units. And these, there'll be five units per building. And again, they are perpendicular to the street. The unit closest to Pepper will be oriented some of the front, faces Pepper, to help with that engagement of the street. So you can see the image there in the bottom-right corner that shows both sides. You can see the two stories on the north and the three stories on the south side of the street. And so, again, just wanted to give you that heads up. You'll be seeing this on your agenda for action. And see if you have any comments or questions.
Thank you, John. Mr. Luna.
Mr. Wesley, maybe you don't know the answers, as Mr. Brady can speak to it. What happened to the property owners or the individuals living in the trailers? Where did they go? Or where are they going to go?
Mayor, councilmember, I will turn that over to Mr. Brady, because I don't have the details on that.
So I don't know that I have all the specifics, but I know we've been working with them. We've actually allocated home funds, and recently the council has, to assist with that. I think the thing to say is that Chicanos Procauska has been very proactive in working with those residents and very transparent about what's happening. So I think where they can, they're helping them to transition. But many of them, at least one of the original plans I heard, was they're trying to work with them to try to actually keep them on-site while they're doing some of this work, with the hope that some of those families could transition from the mobile homes into some of these units. So that was... So I think there's kind of a multiple strategies here. But everything we've heard, they've been very upfront with the residents to talk about all those possibilities. I think in the end, if they're eligible, they would love for them to be able to transition into the very units that they're building at the site. I think that... But I don't know the exact status of every individual, but that's the overall strategy that was conveyed to me. And we're, counsel, we'll just tell you, that's been very, from a staff perspective, working for Chicanos Procauska has been a great experience, and they've been very good to work with in moving this forward. So we're happy they're involved, and we look forward to continuing. This is just one step. There'll be other steps that we'll continue to work with them on.
Mayor, council, if I may add just quickly on to what Mr. Brady just said. They are planning to do this in phases. They'll build the units on the south side of Pepper to the east side, those two rows there first. And then they will do the north side, then they'll come back and do the rest on the south side. So it does give them the opportunity to work with residents, maintain some units on the property as they're building units, and move people that it is possible to move into the units.
Great. Thank you.
Do we have any folks from Chicanos Procauska here today? Hi, thank you. Okay, thank you. I... Let me just say amen to what Mr. Brady just said a moment ago. I did have the opportunity to talk with Chicanos Procauska recently about this, and they were really one of the few organizations, I think, that could have come into this situation and had credibility with the folks that lived in that community and had the trust of that community so that they could help them transition into, out of substandard housing, into better housing. And there are several success stories there of families that they were able to work with, get them qualified to actually move into this new owner-occupied, you know, beautiful new housing that's taking the place of what, the very substandard housing that was there before. So this is, in my mind, a story that is ending far better than I had anticipated it would, given how difficult it was a year or two ago. So I think it's a real success story for the city, but also Chicanos Procauska coming in and being the partner that we needed to work with that community. So this will remain on the consent agenda, but I appreciate the fact that we were able to shine a light on this and tell the story. And they're going to continue to work on redeveloping that property. The property that fronts onto Main Street is not included in this. Is that correct, Mr. Wesley? But is actively being worked on so that that can be redeveloped as well. Mr. Luna.
So, Mr. Wesley, are these market-rate homes or...?
Yes, Mayor, councilmember, Vice Mayor, that's correct.
Okay. Are there going to be any provisions for low-income housing as well as just strictly market-rate homes?
Vice Mayor, I'm not really familiar with all the details on how they're doing that. As Mr. Brady mentioned, they are using some, was it, home funds to assist with the project, which may help with some of that, but I don't know the details.
I think we might see in the proposal for the property that fronts Main Street, a mixed affordable housing project. But we'll see. All right. Thank you. Any questions, counsel? All right, thank you, Mr. Wesley. That's a great story. The next item on our agenda is item 2A, that's to hear a presentation and provide direction on the east and west redevelopment area plans. Mr. Jebiniak.
Good morning, counsel. It's good to be back in front of you. And let me start with a couple of introductions here. David Packard, Management Assistant Economic Development. Felipe Zupia, who is with Matrix Design Group. They've been working with us for about a year and a half, almost, to put together the plan that you're about to see some detail on. We have been going through, last August, or August of '17, I guess it was, we actually presented the layout or the territories of each of the east and west redevelopment areas. Today, we're here with a plan, which is a statutory requirement as well. And on... We've gone through a variety of public hearings and outreach efforts, and they'll detail some of those along the way. And I would expect Monday, we have a final public hearing, and then a vote on each one of those separately, and that will require a two-thirds vote. So let me stop with that and turn it over to David and let him run through things.
Good morning, Mayor and counsel. Just to start off, I'll give you a little bit of more background on redevelopment areas. What are they? It's a redevelopment area is an area designated by council to be in need of revitalization. As a reminder, we went through that process last year. One of two requirements, one or more blighted areas exist, and redevelopment of the areas is necessary in the interest of public health and safety. And as Bill mentioned before, it's governed by state statutes. So there are a number of criterion in the state statute of blight. Some of these are visual conditions, some are nonvisual. If you look on the slide, we have, you know, a few examples. The visual conditions might include things such as graffiti, boarded-up windows. Nonvisual conditions could be a number of things as well, crime, inadequately sized parcels. So those were the things that we looked at during this process. And we've had a number of comments and questions from the public throughout this process. And we've had, as Bill mentioned again, we've had a number of public hearings, lots of phone calls. And the primary question that the public has asked is, you know, how does this affect me? So this slide, just want to make it very clear. Our goals of this project, these are not what these redevelopment areas, these redevelopments will not include, things like eminent domain, loss of personal property, compensation. That's kind of been the main question from the public. So why are we undertaking this project? There's a number of reasons, and you can see them listed there. We do want to, you know, redevelop these areas, areas east and west of downtown. There's great potential there. The light rail has come in recently, and we want to capitalize off of that investment. Want to increase property values, encourage reinvestment. There are a number of reasons to go through this effort. And two of the main benefits and goals that we see from this, having these areas designated as redevelopment areas, a necessary step to qualify for economic development tools and incentives that are available today. And then second, you know, we could create access to certain federal dollars, open up some city funds that can help redevelop these areas. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Felipe. He's going to talk a little bit more about the process we've gone through and some components of the two plans.
Good morning, Mayor, counsel. Appreciate you having me. As Bill mentioned, my name is Felipe Zupia with Matrix Design Group. And we were the lead consulting firm, helping the city go through the process of establishing the findings of necessity for the areas, and then also developing the plan here over the last year. The east RDA is really just west, just east of Town Center RDA, out to Gilbert Road. The west RDA starts at the west boundary with Tempe, and then again, butts up not only to the Town Center RDA, but also the southwest RDA, which you recently not only approved, but adopted the plan late last year. Actually, I think it was in August, just a couple of months ago. To summarize some of the information that David went through, we did actually find the need for the revitalization redevelopment plan. The west had over 56% of their parcels establishing some form of blight, at least one condition of blight. And the east RDA had a little over 57% of the parcels had some form of blight. To put it in context a little bit, this is about 5% over what even the southwest RDA was at. I think the southwest RDA was about 51%, 52%. We did, as Bill mentioned, we went through extensive outreach, not only through different workshops, through notices, brochures, and actually even had a steering committee made up of some of the staff, as well as some of the stakeholders within the area. First public house was held back in June of 2017. The second, just earlier this year, January, when we started the planning process. And then finally, the last one, just last month in September, when we went through the actual recommendations in the plan. So what is in the plans? Well, based on all the input, as well as through the steering committee's direction, we looked at different types of uses that would be appropriate for the area. And not only appropriate for redevelopment, but also appropriate for transitioning into existing neighborhoods. And this slide here kind of illustrates some of those types of uses that are recommended within the plan. So to show you how that works, I want to emphasize, actually, this is not a regulatory document. We aren't coming in here and creating a zoning document or even a specific plan. It really is guidance and recommendations for future development that may come in and look to redevelop. So again, to show you how it works, we took a look at some of these key areas. We call them focus areas. One of the first ones is right there at Stapley and Main. We wanted to look at that because that presents a great opportunity, given its proximity to downtown, and then also the light rail and the light rail station. So these are some of the uses that could be appropriate in the area, some mixed use, capitalizing on light rail, and then also, as you can see, some transitionary residential uses that would match up with the existing residential. And then finally, here on the west, the area that we did look at for a focus area was the area of Dobson and Main. As you know, this area is really emerging as an Asian business core pretty organically. It's not being pushed by anybody. It's just an area that that community has felt very strongly about and really developing on their own. In looking at that, we looked at this area as being, again, an area of mixed use. You have a light rail station. You have a number of opportunities to capitalize on that emerging business district. With that, besides just the land use recommendations, there's some goals and strategies that we're recommending here. Here are some of them, but kind of summarizing real quick. We think it's a great opportunity in both RDAs to look at placemaking opportunities, pedestrian connectivity, safe neighborhoods, and then some strategies on how to implement some of those goals. And then that kind of brings us to the next steps, what we got here today.
So you can see, as we've mentioned, it's kind of a long process. We started back in March 2017 initially, going through the necessary steps to create the boundary, keep the public informed along the way. Last month, we presented the plans to the Planning and Zoning Board, and they approved. And then the final step of the process, at least as far as, you know, the consultant is concerned, would be having the redevelopment plan adopted, basically staying, it's in compliance with our general plan. Then there's another, you know, process after that. Once the plan is adopted, we want to make it happen. We don't want it to just stay on the shelf. So the next matter of business would be distributing this plan to the different city departments, collaborating together, starting to prioritize what projects should we emphasize, what can we do? And we'll do this with both the east and west RDAs, as well as the town center and the southwest that already exist. And as you know, springtime's when we come back for budget hearings, so we want to put forth some recommendations to you so that by next summer, we can actually be implementing a lot of these plans. So with that, we want to open it up for questions.
Thank you, gentlemen. Questions? Mr. Luna.
Great plan. David, you mentioned some federal and local funds. What kind of funds are you going to plan to access and try to, as you move forward on this project?
Well, if I could, real quick, I'll give you a couple of examples. This is really a process to set up the city to recognize the redevelopment process. Good examples of the availability of funds, of course, would be brownfield funding for areas that do exhibit some environmental concerns, particularly older gas stations, auto-lube facilities. Those are typical. There's a number of those in these areas. Having a plan in place positions the city to actually be successful in those funds. So that's an example of the type of funds you would go after.
One other item you'll note, opportunity zones. Both of these, both of these plans, or both of these areas have opportunity zones in them. So definitely one that we want to be looking at at this time.
David, maybe you want to elaborate on what opportunity zone is and what kind of potential that would be?
I'll defer to Bill on that one. He just gave a presentation last week or two weeks ago all about it.
So opportunity funds, opportunity zones, and opportunity funds, and they are different things, really focused on bringing investment into low to moderate income census tracts. This is taking deferred capital gains that have been sitting out there, and right now, across the country, looking at about $6 trillion sitting on the sidelines. In an effort to get some of that in play, there are two things, deferrals and basically forgiveness, and a step up in basis, and I'm not even going to get that technical. But if you hold for five years, you'll have a certain amount of deferral. Seven years, another level of deferral. And if you hold the investment for 10 years, you actually have some forgiveness involved in the tax on that new investment. It's very attractive. The mayor's been down to DC to meet with the Secretary of Treasury and talk about rolling that out. We have, I'll call, four different areas of the city that are available with opportunity funds. There are 11 different census tracts, from southeast Mesa to Falcon Field area, to obviously the downtown corridor. And really, it runs from Stapley westward all the way to the line. And then there's a census track in the Fiesta area as well. Been trying to be out in front of this and really be ready for the investment, because when the dollars are, the rules are issued, the dollars have to be implemented quickly. There's actually six months to get your newly obtained capital gain into a fund, and the fund then has 30 months to actually use those dollars on a project. So the quicker we're ready, the quicker we can receive investment.
Mr. Freeman.
Bill, are some of these funds tied to GPLAT at all? I mean, are you using the same...
So opportunity funds are not, okay? Opportunity funding is a brand-new program. It came out of the budget last December, when that was passed at the federal level. The question about GPLAT in these areas, yes, we can certainly use that tool, and when you combine a central business district and a redevelopment area. So it is eligible.
Thank you.
So, Bill, my next question is, when... What's the plan? What's the timeline so that we can take advantage of the opportunity zone monies? Once we approve it Monday, if we do approve it, then you'll start running and getting this thing going? I'd hate to miss this opportunity.
So a lot of this is, here's the game plan going forward. Now we're going to talk about different programs that may be available. And then we were going to do that as part of the budget process. The opportunity funds are just another layer of things that may be available when we start to look at different funding. I think as we take the plan and then look at what we can implement quickly, I think is where we're going to go. The actual strategies have a high or longer-term effort. What do we call them? Short-term, medium, and long-term effort. And we'll try to pick off some of those easy ones and move as quick as we can.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, the opportunity zone and the funding is completely independent of the city's budget cycle. They're just, they're waiting for a ruling from Secretary of Treasury and IRS so that the investors, and this is private sector investment, can deploy itself into these areas. And so they're just waiting to get those instructions so they can protect themselves against future taxes. And they just want to understand what the rules of the game are. But there's a lot of funds that are being established. We have one, I know specifically, in downtown that's looking at, and also in southeast Mesa. So they're, the private sector is taking that initiative to do it. We're having the conversations with those developers about what we're looking for, what we can support, especially in those areas that don't currently have zoning entitlements or infrastructure. But that's independent of what we can do. Then what we're talking about is the report, the report from a consultant has a variety of recommendations to look at things that the city controls in itself that's independent of the opportunity zone. And those are the kind of things we'll be looking at as far as the city's budget. And we've had a couple of these development areas come to us, councils reviewed. I mean, this is the, what is this, the third and fourth?
Fourth, yep, third and fourth.
Third and fourth. So we've had individuals come and ask about providing incentives to landscape their property or improve their property. And so we, I think this will be the opportunity to come up with maybe some incentives if you're a homeowner or landowner inside the opportunity, or, sorry, inside the redevelopment areas. What kind of maybe unique incentives can we give to improve the property? Because now we've designated these areas, they meet the criteria of having significant amount of blight, and then that would give us the justification to do that.
Yes, please.
Any sense of when the opportunity zones funds may be emerging?
Any sense of when the opportunity zones funds may be emerging? Are we just waiting three months, six months, it could be a year from now?
No, I think it's now down to weekly. It was the end of summer, and I think summer's come and gone, but so now I think we're waiting on it. Mr. Butler, here to save the day. Hot off the press, you ready to tell?
I have to do that all the time, Mr. Jeff Janik. Yeah, Mayor, Vice Mayor, that is exactly the conversation that the mayor had with Secretary Mnuchin. We're pressing the IRS and Treasury to speed up their process. The secretary indicated it's a matter of weeks, not months, but the investment community really can't move forward with establishing a lot of this until that rulemaking comes out, and we're hoping that Treasury moves quickly on that.
Thank you. Mr. Ready?
Yep. Comment and question, you know, comment on the recognizing emerging Asian business core on Dobson and Main? I think it's, I don't think it's emerging. It's already there, right? I think it's, it's time the city recognizes that and help those businesses and figure out what we can do to spur up further growth. I know at the southeast corner of that area, there's a potential, another big marketplace that might be coming there. So that's, that's a very positive sign there. And question, how does the, you have interdepartmental collaboration, how's that look like? Is there like a final product or plan that's developed? I'm wondering, you all work with housing, planning, and other departments, but is there a product that is developed so that then it's, is a guide for us to, to work on, or how's that look?
Well, you do, we have the report from the consultant, so that's a big step for us. And so part of, but part of this is kind of, there's some suggestions in there of areas that we need to look at as a city, whether it has to dealing with, especially blighted areas, you know, things we can do to maybe focus co-compliance enforcement in or, or crime rates. So there's those kinds of programmatic things. And then we need to just look at what can we do to encourage businesses to come into the area, to revitalize the area. But maybe there are some specific, I don't know if it's all capital and projects or street skapes or things to encourage redevelopment. And then those are the things we need to take back to the departments and come back with focus. They may be related to CDBG or home funds, I'm not sure. But we'll, we need to share this with all the other departments so they can see that, and then we can bring back to council some recommendations to try to implement some of the recommendations from the consultant. And there may be other recommendations that come from the departments also.
Thank you. The opportunity zone in combination with the redevelopment area really is a great one-two punch. So, Bill, I know we've got 11
Census tracts.
Census tracts that are qualified for opportunity zones. One or two of them are, is in the Falcon District and in the Gateway area. The remaining ones that are located in this downtown corridor, are they all, once this is completed, are they all going to be within redevelopment areas? Or maybe they already are without this additional work?
The downtown corridors are basically, your borders are University, Stapley, Broadway, all the way to the Tempe line. So think of the, that corridor all the way going westbound. So that's also in the redevelopment area. And for us, like you just said, layering it becomes a very valuable tool.
So will, will all of the opportunity zones, with the exception of Falcon and Gateway, be in redevelopment areas when this is completed?
No, there's also a opportunity zone in the Fiesta area, and is that, I'm not quite sure on that one. Because that, that border is southern, down the baseline, and almost school over the country club. We tried to get them all included and was not eligible as a census tract.
Got it, okay.
It's the one to the east of that, and I don't recall the actual
We can give you some overlays in those, Mayor, but.
Well, in each of the plans, we have a map of the overlay, the opportunity zone and the redevelopment area, so we can share that with you.
Great, and I know we've, there are other, every community in the, in the country is going to be jumped, opportunity zones is being talked about literally everywhere. There's over 8,000 of them in the country, and all of the big, I mean, Goldman Sachs and Merrill Lynch and everyone is putting together these, these funds, but some local folks as well are putting them together, targeted for these areas in Mesa that we're talking about. So as Mr. Butler indicated, I think it's just, we're just a week or two away from the Treasury Department coming out with the regs that I think will then unleash the, answer all the detailed questions that will make this a reality. So this is a great opportunity for us, and I'm glad that we're ahead of the game and we've got, we're layering as many things as we can. And as we all know, Arizona, we have less tools to incentivize development than other parts of the country do. We don't have tax increment financing and a lot of the other things that have caused redevelopment in other places. So we have to grab every opportunity we have. And so I appreciate the proactive approach here to do that.
And just a quick comment, we're, we're seeing developers express interest to the point of tying up property, waiting for further guidance from Treasury on certain pieces. So I think that just bodes well for future investment for us.
So Mr. Jepinik, what are we going to do to assist in marketing? I mean, for prospectuses or otherwise, to let the investment community know that we've got special opportunities, you know, combination of redevelopment areas and opportunity zones and the communities investing in infrastructure? And I mean, some of these are, you can make a pretty compelling presentation to the investment community that this is a good place to bring your money.
So that's between a marketing plan and developing a prospectus are on my radar screen to produce here as soon as they can. We've been trying to track down some qualified consultants to help with some of that, but it's certainly, the prospectus is something that would be valuable. We're finding those funds are now finding us as well. And before, we were talking about trying to find the funds, the funds are actually finding us. So I think that tells a good story. But we have to continue to think about marketing, making the property owners aware that they're even in an opportunity zone is another thing. So there's a variety of tools that we're going to have to implement here fairly quickly.
So Mayor, we're aware of that there's at least, the census tract in the southeast area already has an opportunity zone or an investment group that's already identified properties they're looking at. And we know in downtown, with many of the properties that have changed hands, there's, there's a specific fund that's already being established. Talked to someone yesterday about that. So as Bill says, many of them are already pretty keen on figuring this out, but we'll continue. I think we have it out on our website, so it's there. So if someone's looking at Mesa, they'll be able to track it. And if they're familiar with a particular area of Arizona, I mean, that's, there's only how many census tracts is in Arizona? I don't remember what they got, opportunity zones. But ours will stand out pretty easily, I guess, as this point is. But yeah, we can market more. But for some of those areas that we identify as priority for redevelopment, downtown, southeast Mesa, there's funds already being organized right now. They're just waiting for the rules.
It's going to be exciting to see this all unfold. Thank you. Council, additional questions for these gentlemen? All right, thank you very much. Nice job. The next item on our agenda is item 2B, that's to hear a presentation and provide direction on resources to support Mesa's historic preservation activities. Ms. Zelenka and Mr. Wesley, welcome.
Good morning, Mayor, Council, Christine Zelenka with Development Services Department, and you certainly know John Wesley, our Planning Director. Historic preservation actually resides in, within planning, so I'm going to let John take the lead. But I'd also like to acknowledge Greg Merrick, the Historic Preservation Chair is in the audience and is happy to answer any questions, so I'm going to turn it over to John.
Good morning again, Mayor and Council. As stated, we're going to talk about support of the historic preservation program and moving forward. We appreciate that the council included in this year's budget some funding for us to be able to improve the level of support in this important program to Mesa. HP program helps support all areas of the general plan in terms of neighborhoods and jobs and cultural resources with the work that it does. So we think this will be very beneficial. Council challenges to look at the different ways, I was going to say opportunities, but you just talked about that, the ways we could utilize the funds to support the program in terms of how we might, might provide for the staffing. And so after we've looked at the, the options with the funding available, the duties that are performed, the way other cities perform this function, the cost of different options, our recommendation is that we go with a full-time FTE for the historic preservation officer, support that or augment that with consulting services as needed. And this has been reviewed and supported by the Historic Preservation Board. So how we got there, as we look at the high-level duties, the kind of the day-to-day functions of the historic preservation officer, you can see those listed. But a lot of them require interaction on a regular basis with citizens, interaction with other members of city staff, working regularly with the board and so forth. And that really works best if we have somebody that's in the office every day to perform those functions, be available for the public when they come in, develop those relationships with other city departments. But we also recognize that there are specialty projects that we need to get done, that one individual may not have either the time for or the expertise with. That's where we see the consultant coming in, that as we work, have a full-time staff member, they can work with the community and work with the HP Board and identify what those projects are. And we can come back on an annual basis, then ask for additional funding that's necessary to, to get those specific projects done. Here are a few of the things that we've identified among a long list of items that we could be working on if we have that level of funding. So again, as we looked at the funding options, the price of a consultant is about double that of the city staff person, so we can get a lot more hours, a lot more work done with the city staff person. And again, we looked at the other cities, just about all the other cities in the valley that have historic preservation programs, do with a full-time staff member, augmented by, by consultants. And so we, again, felt like that was the best way to go to get the daily work done.
John, I have a question on evaluate post-World War I neighborhoods or World War II neighborhoods?
It was supposed to be a two, I noticed that typo as I went back through here.
I mean, that's cool. I mean, if we're going to
I know you're reading the slide. Yeah, it was World War II.
Because one did come, Flying Acres did come through recently, so that's why triggered my thinking.
And we have a long list, over 100 of those neighborhoods to be evaluated, so it's a big project.
Okay. All right, thanks.
So, so again, the, the recommendation is utilize the funds that have been provided for a full-time FTE, and then augment that with consulting services as needed. Questions, discussion?
Thank you. Kevin?
I have a couple. Just for clarification, because I wasn't a big proponent of bringing on a full-time employee, as you, as you guys know, but from an admin perspective, what is this person going to need? Or will they be, will they be their own entity? Because what I don't want to do is, is take away from development services and have other staff that should be working on, you know, permits or other things, all of a sudden be overcome by, you know, or reassigned or cross-trained into the historic preservation piece and take away from Christine what your department does on a day-to-day basis. And that was, that was my fear, is, is this person standalone, can do all the admin, can set their own appointments, I mean, the whole nine yards? Or is this somebody that's going to be there, but they're also going to be using additional resources from your department? Because those things need to be figured into your, when you, when you talk about the cost estimates, that needs to be figured in there as well, is what role are they going to play, or what role is, is current administration going to be playing in that? And then my second question is, is if, if by chance question one doesn't pass, we're probably going to have more pressing needs than a historic preservation officer, so what is our default, or what do we do pending the outcome of the November election?
I'll go ahead and answer the first part of it, and Mr. Brady can answer the second if that's okay. We have considered very carefully your position on that. I totally agree, there, there's an admin function. Our idea is, this really is a very independent position. However, in a department perspective, we've centralized administrative functions for many years, so our admin staff supports all of the various areas within development services other than specific projects that come through, a development project, a redevelopment project that would go through other processes, whether it might be rezoning or building permits. Those are already established programs. We have staff that support those. So I really don't see that it would be taking away from any of our existing resources. What we have been trying to do for the past almost 10 years is utilize one of John's staff to fill in as the historic preservation officer, and that, quite frankly, is just not working because, as you say, there's so much other activity going on. We feel this position being dedicated to historic preservation is going to be much more effective. And in today's world, people, professionals are pretty independent as to how they operate. They would be supporting the Historic Preservation Board. The minimal administrative staff time would be available to them just as part of the overall department operations.
And let me just also, I want to be clear, because the way, the intent of how I imagine this is going to work, the work of the historic preservation officer is still, it's not changing. That flow is going to come regardless, because we get applications, I know, all the time, but we get applications that need the attention of someone with this background and skill. So that flow or what comes into the city isn't going to change. So we're having to manage those processes today, so I don't think this really changes it. In some ways, council member, to your point, I appreciate you bringing that up, by having someone who's dedicated to this area, it'll now allow John to free up somebody who can go back to helping with the other parts of the development services and, and the flow of applications that are coming in. But I also want to be clear, is the intent of the consulting work was really to take on those specific studies and projects that are out of kind of the normal flow of processes that are coming in. So we don't take somebody who's supposed to be reviewing applications, and now they're too busy because they're doing an application for historic, some kind of historic designation. The idea is to bring in experts to supplement their work and be able to take that responsibility on, so we don't take them away from the work that's, that they need to be done on a daily basis. Now, if Prop 200, or Prop, sorry, if question one doesn't pass, I always compare, I always explain this because obviously, you can imagine, there's a great concern from the city employees about this question. And the only way, the best way I can explain it to them, in 2009, 2010, when we hit the worst part of the recession, and I had to go around to every department and talk about the reductions that were going to take place, we were looking at about $62, $65 million shortfall in our budget. And as you all know, the Budget Office has gone and taken the calculation of what the impact would be if question one doesn't pass, and it's over $200 million. So it's three times worse than what it was in the recession. And so when those that have been here or actually were able to keep their jobs during the recession understand that was devastating. I think in Christine's area, we probably reduced it by over a third.
Two-thirds, sir.
Two-thirds. So if that were to happen, I mean, it's, everything's going to be on the table. $200 million would be across the board, 50% reductions almost everywhere. And as much as we could try to take all of it out of non-public safety, we wouldn't even have, there's not even enough, even if we were to eliminate every library, museum, and decided not to issue another permit in the city, it still wouldn't be enough. So that's how bad it would be. So we would, it would be pretty dramatic. And so I guess the point is that if that happens, we're having a whole nother discussion. Yet historic preservation officer will be the least of our concerns at that point.
And I guess to your point is, you know, should we wait until after the first of the year?
We won't even have this person hired by then, so we'll be fine.
Mr. Freeman, uh, Mr. Luna?
Well, I do have some questions. I, I did some homework last night, but as I read on page 10, the factors, other factors about advantages and disadvantages of consultant versus a full-time employee. You know, I, I think when you go out to hire somebody, say we did hire a full-time HPO, you're going to hire someone based on their knowledge and bench strength about what they've already been doing and capable of doing to, to strengthen the organization that you're trying to develop here. And I asked the question, can that person be able to deliver the right type of direction that we need as a, a city in historical preservation? So I think that, that will determine whom we hire, if, if the event that we do. So I, I support a full-time employee. I understand Kevin's concerns, but the ability to cross-reference and do everything within the city is very important for a full-time employee. And then us as a council, mayor and council, to share our vision with them, get their perspectives to be able to make an informed decision is important. So I like the advantages, the consultant versus the FTE. Thank you.
And that was actually one of the, the major issues that we looked at in recommending an FTE. Certainly, as the department had, my job is to make sure that the department follows the strategic initiatives of council. And having a, a full-time person, it just makes it a lot easier to pull them in and make sure we're doing what you've directed us to do and the direction you want us to take.
Just one other thought. I know years ago in the fire department, we thought about having outside ambulance services stationed, be stationed in fire stations. So in other words, a private ambulance service would be stationed in a fire station for delivery services. But as a captain, I felt uncomfortable with that because I had no jurisdiction really over them as an employee. They weren't my employee, but they were living in a City Mesa house. So how could I give them direction without offending them and things like that? So that was just one thing I played with over from life experience that I think it's easier for us to be able to deliver that service as historical preservation if we have oversight of that person. So thank you.
I think that's a great idea. I also support having a full-time employee and they'll be, they'll certainly be vested in the City of Mesa. But I was interested in hearing with Greg and see if he can comment how this person plans to work with the historic preservation plan. And what do you see, how this partnership is going to unfold?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Luna. The, as you well know, the board has been advocating for this for some time. Just some of the things that Christine and John have outlined with the current situation of having to share a person that's also working on the development applications coming in, admittedly has maybe five hours a week to work with the board. And so it's clearly creates an issue where we are asking for a lot of things that this person just doesn't have time to do. And thanks to council, previously, we had a contract person. And we were actually made great strides in moving forward, but the limitations were being a contract person, person didn't have access to city files, didn't have email, didn't have a city phone. And so when they're out in the neighborhoods talking to people, there was no one, it was really hard to get a hold of that person. And that person didn't have the resources that a city staff person would. So that's why we are advocating having a full-time person. And we think that will actually be addressing some of the needs that are out there and give the board the support that it needs, that it frankly does not getting now.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. So this is not an action item. It's just reporting back on what we discussed during budget hearings and...
To a certain degree, the council asks us to come back, make sure we're, if I don't hear any other concerns, will this move forward with this direction?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is 2C. That's to hear a presentation and take action on the city's next steps in preparation for the United States 2020 census, including the creation of a 2020 census task force and appointing members to the task force. Scott had Mr. Robbins and Mr. Butler with us. Gentlemen?
Good morning, Mayor. Before I turn it over to Jeff, just wanted to remind you, and the other thing maybe you're hearing as much about as opportunity zones is the census and our preparations for the census. And of course, we're, we're taking that very seriously. There's a lot of discussion, lawsuits swirling around it. But we're going through our normal process and our normal preparations to make sure that all the data that we have, all of the outreach we'll be doing for the census, will ensure that we get the most accurate count as we can. And part of that is forming this task force that will engage community leaders, faith leaders, others that can help reach out to communities and target that. So Jeff's going to walk through that, tell a little bit more about the process. And this is, you're, you're going to continue to hear more and more about this as we ramp up.
Thanks, Scott. So the last time we were with you was back in March. And at that time, we talked a little bit about the census, the impact it can have on the city, and we talked about task forces and how those are used throughout the nation to increase response rates to the census. We also asked for some direction from council. And at that time, we were asked to go out into the community, identify different organizations that are critical to Mesa, and to ask them if they wouldn't mind having somebody from their organization volunteer on our task force. And I think I just closed ours. Sorry. Let me try and find our, there we go. Thank you. So we went out to those different groups, and we're very successful. And we're very thankful to have the type of response that we had to our request. We looked for organizations in our community that were representative, diverse, influential, meaning that they truly speak for their constituents, they know the needs of their constituents, and that when they do speak, they're listened to because they're trusted. And we've had, you'll see in your council report, 24 individuals representing 23 different organizations who we are proposing to be on this task force. And they represent a range of interests in the community, from the faith-based community to education, the business community, many nonprofits are involved, and will be actively helping us to know, how do we identify barriers to participation in the census? And then how do we help people make it easy for them to break down those barriers to participate in the census in 2020? So to give you a quick overview of some of the roles of this task force, their main objective is to develop a strategic communications and engagement plan. And that's where we talk about breaking down barriers, identifying those, and coming up with a plan. I anticipate that many of the activities that they are going to propose are going to be marketing-related, trying to inform and educate, explain what the census is and what it is not, and how the data can and cannot be used. And at that point, I also anticipate that they will probably come back to council to explain any budgeting requests that they have to fund those activities. Lastly, we will come back to council, probably in late summer 2019, to give a final report on the activities of the task force, and then to report back on some of the outcomes that we had from that effort. That's all I've got for you.
Do you want to talk about your assignment for the, who's heading up the task force?
Yes, thank you. To preface this, I served on our 2010 task force before I served on the council. And that was a great experience. And it was fun to be engaged with this very diverse group of people from all the different constituencies in our community, different ethnic groups and faith groups and business groups and neighborhood groups. And it was a great experience. And someone else, the only person who was working harder than that group was Mr. Heredia, because he professionally was working for the Census Department at that time. So we're fortunate to have a council member that has professional background in this area and is ideally situated to represent our council on this task force. And I'm pleased that he's agreed to do that. And we've asked him to serve as the chair of representing our council on this task force to hopefully have a very robust effort in our city to respond to the census. I've had the opportunity to, as I think we all have, when we go to NLC and other places, this is what people are talking about. Because as a nation, there's a lot of concern over the upcoming census. With the inclusion of the immigration question, immigration status question on the census, there's been a lot of reaction indicating that there's probably, that's going to have a huge chilling effect on, on getting an accurate count. And for cities like Mesa that has a significant population that could be offended by that question, the potential for an undercount is, is very, very real. And when you have an under, and the economic impact to our city of having an undercount is measured in the tens of millions of dollars. Because this is something that lasts for 10 years. This sets the base for everything upon which we receive federal funds, state shared revenue. I mean, the list goes on and on. Everything is tied back to census numbers. And so the potential for an undercount in Mesa could be devastating. So I'm glad that we are appointing this task force, and we all need to support them and listen to their, they're going to come back to us with recommendations. Is that correct? As to what we as a city can do to facilitate a better count?
Yes. And I will be communicating with you directly about their recommendations. We, as being part of this task force, we are committing to whatever the plan is to participate, to do our best to participate in that strategy and to contribute. And the task force will be overseeing the execution of that. The city will not be, except for maybe me, since that's my job. But aside from that, yeah, it'll be, it'll be run by them, and they'll be coming back and informing you. And I think the biggest thing will be any request for funding for marketing. But we'll see when the task force decides exactly what the strategy is.
Jeff, why don't you share with council, I can't, we may have talked about this last time, but there's really kind of a shift in the way the census is going to be done this year, where as opposed to filling out hard copies or people knocking on your door, talk a little bit, because even for this task force, it's, it's really not just getting, not only getting people to participate, but how they're going to access that information. Will you, may you share that a little bit?
This census is going to be different from any census we've ever had before. In the past, it's always been a form that goes out. People respond to the form on paper, they mail it back, or an enumerator comes to their door. For the first time ever, and this is partially in the response to a direction from the federal government, that the census could no longer spend a dollar more on what they did in 2010. They had to come up with new ways. And this has been good, very innovative, we think. But the first way is that they'll be able to respond online now. And so one of the major concerns about responding online, of course, is that there could be phishing attempts. And so we are very conscientious about making sure we educate people on what a legitimate request online from the census looks like and what a fake one looks like. We do not want that disrupting and causing distrust in participation. And so we will be actively monitoring that. There will also be phone banks for the first time ever. And in a 2015 test that was primarily conducted in Mesa in Districts 1, 2, and 5, we saw that many of our senior residents prefer the phone banks. And, and so that will be something we want to definitely educate, areas of our city where we have primarily senior citizens, about that option. And another major difference from this census is that people who do not respond to the census, typically in the past, there's been six follow-ups to people's houses to see, you know, do they live here? Are they willing to participate? Because of funding levels, the maximum time that an enumerator will go out to a home is three times. So that's been cut in half. And so it's, it's very important that we get a voluntary response upfront so that we can maximize our return and response rate.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Whitaker.
Question. So if it's online only, the effort to actually get people to go and fill out the online form will be phone banking and door-to-door campaigns? There will be no mailers sent out from the federal government in any regard for people to reply to?
Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker, I need to clarify. So on March 23rd, that's when the online notice will go out and people can respond online. But if people do not respond online, they will be sent a traditional mailer. And then if they don't respond to that one, they'll get one more follow-up mailer. So there will be traditional paper forms sent to people's doors as well as a backup for those who do not respond online.
Got it. But so the notification that they'll get won't give them the ability to reply to anything. Rather, they would have to go to a website and then fill out a digital version of the form?
For the online version, they'll be mailed a card saying, here's your information to go online and respond. And that's one way they can do it. If they choose not, and I hope I'm understanding the question, but if they don't respond online using the card, they will just have a traditional mailer they can fill it out, and they can just mail it back, just like they've done in past censuses.
Okay. And then the other question I have, is there, on those forms, are those anonymous to some source? Or is it actually, are you filling out specific data that indicates who you are? In the instance of the immigration status, is that identifiable? Or is it anonymous for the most part, other than the address that was sent to?
That's a, that's a great question, Councilmember Whitaker. Yes, they know the address that it goes to. And so in that sense, they know if that person at that house is a legal citizen of the United States. Otherwise, the information is, what's your race? What's your gender? Very general questions, just about the type of person, number of persons in the household, that type of information. So they will not be asking, and this is very important that all our residents understand, they will not be asking for sensitive information about names, date of birth, that type of information will not be asked for on the census.
Thanks, Jeff. Thank you. Additional questions? Yes, Mr. Luna?
Sounds like this is an action item.
It is. We do need a motion on this.
So I move that we create the task force and that we appoint those individuals that you've listed on the task force, and that we ask Councilmember Brad Edes, since he's got a lot of experience, to chair the task force.
Thank you. There's a motion. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Freeman. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. We look forward to working over this. But this is again in 2020, so there's a lot to be done between now and then. So thank you. The next item on our agenda is item three, to acknowledge receipt of various board minutes. Is there a motion to that effect? Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Next item is to hear reports on meetings and conferences attended. Mr. Freeman?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I had to look at the calendar. It's been some time ago, but had an open office hours. It feels like, you know, a month ago, but it was about 10 days ago. We had a great opportunity to reach out in the Hermosa Vista neighborhood, and the mayor was able to join me. So we were able to discuss ballot questions and neighborhood concerns. Had a good turnout. And thanks to Katie Brown for organizing that, and the other staff members that were there. We had a lot of staff members there and appreciate them coming and supporting. Thank you.
Thank you. That was a nice event. Mr. Luna?
I've been busy as well. Last night, we had a Q and A on the ballot questions. We were at the United Methodist Church over on Power Road, District 5. Also had mobile office hours at the Multi Generation last Friday, and great turnout, food truck Friday as well.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
I just wanted to introduce Mark Powell. He's a resident of District 6. He's shadowing me this, this morning, and wanted to come in and see really what we do and how we go about our days. So...
Welcome, Mr. Powell. Thank you. Any other announcements?
Can I talk about our ribbon cutting yesterday?
We did. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. We did have a ribbon cutting yesterday for the new downtown Marriott has always been, has been an icon in our downtown area for decades. And it's been kind of the anchor for a lot of the Mesa Convention Center and the...
Sheraton before was a Marriott, right?
Before, that's right. It's been there under different flags for, for a few years. Those who are paying attention may have seen the Delta logo just was erected on the, on the, on the building. And that is a, a new, exciting brand in the Marriott family. And that hotel's undergone a dramatic renovation. Every room in the hotel and the common areas has been redone. Tens of millions of dollars have been spent, and it's beautiful. So we have another generation of that hotel really elevating downtown and, and being a very complimentary to the efforts that are going on downtown with other redevelopment projects. So congratulations to the investor, those who have invested so, so much in that facility. It's, it's a real asset to our downtown. Any other comments, council? Thank you. Mr. Brady, what's our schedule look like?
Just a reminder, our next study session and council meeting will be Monday, October 15. And then following that, or just that same day, later in the morning, we'll have the ribbon cutting for the household hazardous materials facility. So that's very exciting to have that opened up on Monday also. And this Saturday, October 13th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., will be an event called Made on Main Street, highlighting some of the work that's done here in downtown Mesa. So invite everybody to come down for that event from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. on Saturday.
You know, the household hazardous waste facility is going to be very popular. So that's, I know we're all excited to go to that. It's the long lines for those special events.
The nice thing is you don't have to wait once every quarter, yes, six months. You can, it'll be open with a lot more hours. That'll be a good event.
Well, congratulations, everyone who's, who's made that happen. In terms of scheduling, I'm going to share one other event. Last night, I had the opportunity to go to the Arizona Fall League at Sloan Park. For those in our community that are baseball fans, I hope, more people need to know about this. I think we all love spring training. And we all, during spring training, we sit there and wish, I wish this could happen more often because we have these beautiful facilities, and this is a lot of fun. But what we, I think we need to get better acquainted with all the stuff that continues to happen in those stadiums, others outside of spring training. So last, the Arizona Fall League is amazing. This is like a minor league All-Star league. It's literally the top prospects in baseball are from all of the Major League Baseball teams. I mean, Cactus League, Grapefruit League, all of the teams are coalesced into some teams here in our, in the valley. So the Arizona Solar Sox is the name of our team. But it's the Athletics and the Cubs and the Red Sox and several other great teams combined. They're, they're top prospects. I saw a homerun last night go farther out of Sloan Park than I have during any spring training game. So these, the folks that are playing there are future MLB All-Stars. So if you're a baseball fan, the good news is there's some really great baseball, and it's very affordable. You can buy family packages for, you know, 20 bucks, get the whole family in. Concessions are very reasonable. are very reasonable. I think you can tell, I had a really good time. And if you're a baseball fan, you really ought to be taking advantage of it. It'll be going on for the next several weeks at Sloan Park and then some of the other parks around the Valley. Any other reports regarding schedule or conferences? If not, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Aye.